Thank you for coming out to the St. John Plan Commission Study Session for July 21st. Sergio, roll call please.
Bob Broelson.
Here.
Yolanda Cardona.
I'm here.
John Gill.
Here.
Donna Little.
Here.
Jason Vlasic.
Here.
Nancy Woland.
Here.
And John Kennedy.
Here.
Also Attorney Adam Decker.
Here.
Engineer Ken Kraus.
Here.
Councilman and Liaison Brian Blazak.
Here.
And Town Manager Chris Salatas.
Present.
We've got a full house.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. And just for some general housekeeping tonight, it's a study session for the general public. It's just for us to get more knowledge on the projects. No decisions are made tonight. There's no public comment. It's just information gathering. So just FYI for everyone in attendance here tonight. So first on the agenda, we have the St. John Industrial Park Lot 3. We got Jim, I see you here. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Jim Weezer. I'm an attorney from Shererville, and I represent Lee Malazo, who's here with me, who's the owner of the property. Just to refresh you, I think we were here, we've been in front of the BZA, but I think we're here before as well. And Lee has a business in the industrial park. In fact, he was the first business that went into the St. John Industrial Park when he built his original building in 1996. Since then, he's added on, and this, his business has grown, and he's asking, or is seeking to add on again another, is it about 9,000 square feet? Yeah, about 9,000, additional 9,000 square feet. Well, in doing that, it presented several issues. The first one was that we worked through, I worked through with Adam, and I think we've worked through with Ken, was on an easement reduction. And if you have the documents in front of you, you can see that there was a, there was an easement for a drainage easement, which really has never really functioned like that, but it was dedicated as a drainage easement. We've gotten the waiver from NIPSCO to build across their easement, but the drainage easement, this would extend, the building would extend a bit into the drainage easement. So we've asked, so it's a rear yard requirement, so we've asked for a reduction of that easement, and that's a matter that you will hear at your public hearing. And we've presented that, all that documentation to the staff. The second thing, of course, is the site plan, and you should have that there to show how the building is, how the extension of the building is going to lay out on the lot, and the size of it. And if you are, need or would desire to have some information relative to the nature and type of construction, Lee can certainly provide that to you if you believe that's required. We're just looking for site plan approval so that he can commence construction. As we all know, costs have increased dramatically, and the sooner he can get it under, under construction, the more money he can save, hopefully, because the costs have gone up pretty exponentially. So that's really the essence of what we're looking for, and what we're presenting to you this evening. And if there's, as I said, any questions that you all have, either Lee or I'll do our best to respond to them and answer them.
And just for the Plan Commission Board, and Nancy and I serve on both the Plan and BZA, so the BZA approval was contingent on Plan Commission approval, which most importantly was based on the ability for Ken to review the site plan to determine if the easement was okay, reducing from 20 to 12. In your packet, you will receive a letter from Ken stating that he is comfortable with it. And that was the main purpose why we, it came to the Plan Commission, just so we could have our engineer review it and make sure everything's okay. Regarding other documents, Sergio, is everything in for us to take action on the public hearing? Is all the other site plan information you require, or the town require, being presented? I mean, Jim talked about if additional information is required.
Yeah, they're scheduled for a public hearing next month.
But do we have all their other site plan information that is required for?
Well, there's some additional information possibly missing, which is the building rendering, some landscaping plan, lighting plan, but what you have before you is what's been submitted to date.
So do you guys have to, so do they have to turn in the building plans, landscaping, prior to the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So whatever Sergio needs, you guys will provide?
Will provide.
Okay. Very good. Sergio, do they know the list of things they need to provide?
It's in our ordinance, if not, I can...
Yeah, I've talked to Sergio on a couple of other matters anyway, so I'll make sure I get in touch with him right away.
Any other questions from the board?
I am okay on this one. Thank you.
Okay. We will see you for a public hearing on August 4th.
Fourth or fifth?
Fourth.
Fourth?
I think it's fourth.
We'll be here. All right. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you. Sorry if I moved on too quickly on that one. So just, next on the agenda, we have the St. John Commons.
Yep.
This is a mixed-use development at 10201 Calumet Avenue. Zoned R1, 20 acres. How are you, sir?
Nick, I missed the last meeting. So I understand there were some changes, and it looks like potentially you have made changes from that meeting.
Yes.
So if you could give us a brief...
Recap?
Recap of changes that you made per the last meeting.
Okay. I'm Nick Georgiou with Sumac Architects, Griffith, Indiana. This is our, we've been here several times, and I would like to think that we've continued to get positive feedback. We've continued to refine this plan to a point where I think, and we had some meetings after the last Plan Commission, we met with Sergio Mendoza and Chris Salatas, and we've been trying to put this together into what we think is actually a very nice development. There are three components to the mixed-use development. The area that fronts on Calumet Avenue is the retail, is approximately 26,000 square foot of retail. We've actually created a boulevard entrance off of Calumet that comes down into the development, then segues into a live-work arrangement. From the original presentation of the live-work, we've reduced the size about 20%. We actually have not, we're segregating the access now, limiting to that area, and then we're segregating the residential areas with access so that they don't connect through the entire development, which is how we originally presented it. The other thing is relative, and then it segues and transitions to, there's a sort of a green space retention pond. The intent is actually create a water pond with water feature that would actually be shared by the residential access on the live-work units to the west, and to the paired villas development to the east. We connect to, there's two streets that currently dead-end into the development. Checking my notes here real quick. Much as I do this, I keep forgetting the names of the two streets. We have Blue Sky on the south, and we have, I'm sorry, Blue Sky to the north, and Red Rock Place to the south, which is the Greystone Paired Villas to the south. We have the, the south entrance there off of Greystone actually terminating in a cul-de-sac, and we've had different iterations of residential down there. We're now showing just two detached cottage homes there. We're cognizant of the pipeline easement that's there, and the clearance required in order to put any kind of residential there, and we are able to do that, but we now have two single-family cottage homes that are at that termination where Red Rock Place comes in. There is no continuation beyond that. The northeast corner, we've always created...
Nick, I'm sorry. Just south of those two cottage homes, are those duplexes?
Yes.
Okay. Just, I'm looking at your aerial, I just want to confirm.
Now, if you look at the aerial that shows, that picks up the aerial beyond it on the third or fourth page, those are duplexes, that is zone R3 to the south of us.
Okay. Just want to confirm that. Thank you.
So I guess to reiterate, we're, to the north half of the property, a but C2. The other east half of butts are R2. The east side is R2 to the south, it's R3, and it's C2 across the street of Calumet. The, I guess the most continuing discussion's been about the residential component in the east half of the facility. I believe after the discussions we've had, we've reduced the density of the residential by almost 40% from what we originally presented here. We're now showing paired villas, approximately 10 units. We actually went to 100-foot lots, which is consistent with other developments, and actually a little more than other developments relative to paired villas. And we have 10 lots, 20 units in there, and that part of the residential component does connect to Blue Sky to the north. In the last discussion, because the previous presentation had a complete connection from Calumet all the way through the residential, we've now, as I said, cut that off. I actually prefer that the residential components are segregated from the commercial areas. But we did, in the comment we received, we did show a, what I would call, private or emergency access, just right if you come down from Blue Sky into, into the development. There is a private or emergency access drive that allow, would allow you to connect to the west there, and get you to the live-work area. That is arbitrary to us. We could delete it, or totally segregate the residential components. Again, this eastern component of paired villas, we always presented a landscape berm and heavily screened from the adjacent residential areas, and we think that this is a very nice solution to that residential component. I do want to point out, the other exhibit we added in here is actually relative, comps or relevant other developments for paired villas. There's a photo page in here that says paired villa examples. Two of these are in St. John. One of them is Shererville. If I go counterclockwise in the pictures of those are, I don't know if Sergio's going to pull those up or not. But anyways, from the pictures, On Golden Pond's on the upper left, Lake Hills Paired Villas on the upper right. There's additional paired villas on the lower right, which is On Golden Pond also. And then the lower left is Waterford Place in Shererville. The other thing I want to point out is, is we're cognizant, and we keep saying that this will be an upscale residential component development. I actually rent through, other than going through actual appraisals, I actually went through where these price points are of all these developments are, or these ones that we're presenting in particular. Waterford and On Golden Pond, the price points are ranging currently from 355 to 440,000. The Lake Hills ones are similar, they're, I think, maybe 300 to about 400,000. That is the level of quality we're looking to meet or exceed. I know there have been questions, the intent of these would be masonry, front units at a minimum. Again, we're proposing extensive landscape and berming to screen from the adjacent subdivisions, but we're definitely proposing a housing product that's comparable or exceeds the adjacent properties of the residential units. I mentioned the pond feature that we're providing with a fountain. Oh, the one thing I did not, I had to make notes, make sure I didn't miss anything. The bike path which comes into the east, we are, we actually, it's going two ways. As soon as it crosses into the property, it will go immediately south, because it'll connect to the back of the Greystone Bike Path, which is at the backside of the lots that are to the south of us. And one of the comments came out at the last Plan Commission meeting, is we've actually extended the bike path, continued leg west, all the way to the Calumet, right away into the sidewalk that would be there. We did show a gazebo off at the far west end by the Calumet sidewalk area relative to that. So we've connected the bike pass from comments we made. We've reduced the density on the residential component. We've reduced the live-work a little bit, and I think what we're proposing tonight is a, is a very nice development. I know I had discussions with, when we met with Chris and Sergio, we talked about property taxes, et cetera. I ran some real rough numbers. This development built out should exceed $18 million in investment in real estate taxes on this, or equivalent of the appraised value, about $18 million. And with that, I'll open it up to any comments or questions. Oh, I do want to comment, Sergio did forward us some neighboring, some neighborhood comments that particularly came from the residents to the south off Red Rock Place and Greystone. They were almost unanimously encouraging that we do not extend that street anywhere beyond where we propose it, which is exactly where we propose, is ending it in a cul-de-sac. It's not our intention. Actually, I wouldn't recommend that we extend it into the commercial part of the development. So we heard those comments, and we agree with them.
Thank you, Nick. All right, we'll bring it to the board. Questions, comments, feedback? I will open it up.
John, this is Yolanda. My only question was going to be about the comments that were submitted to Sergio via email. It looked like it was a petition signed by 51 residents from Red Rock, but it looks like they've addressed that issue. But just for purposes of me understanding, there's a little bit more. Can you put the cursor where Red Rock is? I mean, is it, on what side of the subdivision is it?
It's where the cul-de-sac is, on the south side.
Gotcha. Uh huh. So it would end there. Okay, got it.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm good on this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. All right, I'm, Nick, I'm gonna, I wasn't there the last one, so I'm gonna shoot a couple at you. So I don't know if I've ever asked you this. The work-liv space, do you buy the, the commercial and the residential, both, or do you?
No.
No. You either buy the unit, or the...
Basically, the most, well, we talked about similar, you know, actually, we're asked to go, you know, we've referred to other developments. One is in downtown Crown Point on Main Street, where it's a commercial below, and those are condos above. The other current one, which is actually selling quite successfully, is Centennial Park, where it's retail on the lower level, and those are entirely, I believe they're leased spaces. The condos up above, there's two floors of condos, which I think are selling in the 400-plus thousand range, and I'm told it's 80% sold already.
Okay. All right. I just, someone made a comment, you buy the whole thing. You buy the residential and the, and the retail all at once?
No.
Okay. Going to the private drive, I like the idea, you know, you'd never want a one-way and one-way out. It might be nice to see the private drive, emergency access on the south side of the street, put the pond on the north, maybe give some more buffer between the R2 and the duplexes, and then make it more of a, you know, you have the private drive on the north-hand side, the emergency access point on the north-hand side, if possible. I don't know what the engineering is.
The, the flow of the drainage is actually north to south and southeast, so...
Okay.
Our inlet's gonna come through the north there. If I put the street, I'd have to, well, whether it's culverted or whatever, there's an engineering issue there, but...
Okay. No, no, that's...
But we did extend the landscaping berm...
I see that.
And cross that to screen as much as possible there.
I like even that private, or as an emergency access for those neighbors, just in case if Blue, you know, gets shut down. They have another access point to get out of their sub, that cul-de-sac. And then the final comments I had, a couple more, is the bike path. I know it just showed when you're here, if we can get some character. And then I would like to see it connected to the retail. I think it would be nice if you're on the bike trail, and whatever retail potentially comes in there, you have some connectivity, you can ride your bike up into the commercial.
You actually sort of do. I think, if I believe per the code, you, we have to provide an eight-foot sidewalk.
Oh, right there. I got you. I see it now.
So you're gonna literally go all the way to Calumet, and Calumet becomes your connection into the development for either walking or riding.
And then, you know, if I had my choice of the four duplexes, I would pick the one on the bottom left. So I think what we need is, you know, as we look at this PUD, we need to see the type of material. I don't know if we have a list yet of the type of material, the framing, the, you know, is it 2x6, 2x4? What are the requirements all these units are potentially gonna have? Just, you know, we need to get, Nick, you've been here five, four, five. We just need to now get to the point where if this is what you're presenting to the board, we need to button everything up, find out what your details are, how much brick, you know, all those details, and then, so we could, we need, we need to either make, we need to make a recommendation of the council, because this will be a recommendation of the council. So we need to get you to that point where we can move this to the council's, you know, our recommendation of the council.
We understand that the next step, and we'll discuss that, and by the way, other than Doug Reddick, who's present for DVG team, Brad Lambert and Ron Karaher, property owners, are also present tonight. Our intent is, and we understand, we would have to identify all that in a PUD submittal, and a PUD documentation, and that is something that we would look forward to, going through those items, those details, those requirements, and presenting the, we have to present the design concepts for all the components as part of that submittal, and absolutely, we would look forward to your feedback and how we can satisfy you.
Yeah, not just on the residential side, on the...
No, the whole thing. No, the whole thing. We did present, just for your comment, Bob, it is presented, the comparable retail is Summer Winds and Cedar Lake, and it's stone and brick, and, you know, and limited, there might be a coping of ethos. You asked a question about, we did propose renderings for the live-work. It is all masonry and storefront below on the retail. So, and then obviously, we'd carry that through on the residential. But yeah, those details will all be presented, negotiated, and hopefully agreed to.
Okay. Questions, comments, more discussion from the board?
We're still in the rezoning process of this PUD, right?
Right, yeah. We're only in the recommend, we have, we need to get the final of the PUD.
So all this stuff that we're talking about, that Nick needs to get to us as part of the PUD agreement?
Right, for us to review.
So it won't be site plan approval?
No. It's all part of the zoning, the PUD. Yes, Ken, you are correct.
We reviewed with Sergio the PUD criteria, and all the way down to accepting legal engineering of the site, but the design components, all the pieces, and the proposed, it was part of the rezoning request for the PUD, yeah.
Any questions for Nick, if not all?
In all of the retail spaces, do you expect that those to be leased or purchased?
Retail...
Especially in the, the live-work?
Theoretically, they could be. I'd have to almost defer to the owner, because they could be condo offices, similar to, there's not a lot of those up here over by where Oltoff's Corporate, there's, there's, there's a K&amp;D Development, it's retail, I mean, office condos. Right now, they're leased. They could be condo offices, but they are separate from the retail pieces.
And then the condos are for sure purchased, not leased? No rentals?
Well, at this point, where the intent is to have them as condos for sale.
But they could be rented?
Well, I assume if anyone buys anything in the town, they could rent it theoretically, but the intent is they're condos for sale.
Do you have an idea on what businesses would be interested in moving into the live-work or the other retail spaces?
Professional offices, service-type facilities, insurance companies, lawyers, et cetera. I mean, the way we've segregated, and also the way we've sort of transitioned from the full retail, we actually have a transition in the roadway with a landscape buffer as you transition into the live-work, to a more, what I would call, professional office environment relative to that.
So retail isn't necessarily retail, it's offices? I'm just worried about the tax impact, or is the town gonna benefit, you know, from retail taxes if we, or is it just going to be offices?
Well, I don't believe the town receives any sales tax return, so it's a matter of what's the value of the development.
If it was retail, they would, correct?
Sales tax is a state tax.
Yeah.
The only, I mean, it's a local income tax if people live in the town of St. John and make, make an income. There's a local income tax that St. John would get.
It would not, my personal opinion, yeah, if the owner jumps in here, I think retail, like, you know, convenience store, et cetera, would be counterproductive.
No, I don't mean that. I mean, like, upscale shops, that's something that would be a benefit to the residents instead of just office spaces.
If that's conducive, I think we would absolutely avoid any kind of food service, convenience, anything that, like that.
I mean, Donna, one, I'm sorry, one benefit, I'm sorry, one, just to answer Donna's question. One benefit you would see specifically for the town of St. John, which just started last month, is road impact fee.
Right.
So retail in this, of this size is, is more than a residential impact. So if you have this type of retail, they are paying per 100 square foot, a larger value for road improvement. So you would see a benefit to the town of St. John in regards to that type of commercial development and the road impact fee on a per-unit basis.
So, I just wanted to weigh in, so you bring up a point that, my wife has stated the same thing about, well, what's gonna go in those, those lower units below the, below the condos? And, you know, you mentioned, you know, that, that, those are smaller units, they're 1,200 square feet, so they make, they make sense for a professional office, et cetera. But they also make sense for like, a boutique kind of, kind of store. You know, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of arts and crafts kind of, kind of things. There's those types of offerings that go for a smaller space like that, because obviously they could, they could afford it. And that would be something we would be, we would be looking at. I mean, we're genuinely trying to attract, you know, tenants in that area to, you know, add to the commons feel of the overall development. The larger retail buildings, there, those, those units individually are gonna be around 2,400 square feet, you know, so doubling those up would be like a sizable restaurant, obviously something like that. Single units by themselves are, you know, 2,400 square feet or so, and that's gonna be, you know, that's a sizable space as, as well for something, it would be, you know, a doctor's office, an emergency care clinic, a, a, a Pops Beef, things similar to what we have down in the, in Summer Winds Plaza in Cedar Lake. But the smaller units underneath the, in the live-work building, we're definitely gonna have that open to both office space and other type of, like, boutique retailers.
Okay.
Good question. Hearing, no more questions for Nick. Once we start getting further information, we'll coordinate with Sergio and see what the next steps are.
Thank you. Thank you for your input.
All right. Next on the agenda, story, a story, pardon me. This is rezoned PUD for 96 single-family lots on Parish Avenue, currently zoned open space, 74 acres. I believe Michael is right there.
I guess.
Michael, you got one more?
Yes, sir.
You skipped me. No, you skipped me. I'm not...
Reiteration.
You'll pay for that.
Thank you.
So just for the board, this is going to public hearing on August 4th. This is a rezone, so this will be a recommendation. It would be a recommendation, favorable, unfavorable, or no recommendation to the town council, and the town council has the final determination. Please tell me I said that correctly, Sergio.
There is a quick revision. There were some discrepancies on my end, so during the application process, I did not get that in time with the correct information, so we're going to push that back until September for the public hearing.
September, but it, again, it's a recommendation by the, this board...
Correct.
...to the town council.
It's a recommendation to the council.
Okay, so we... Okay, so we, we'll determine if we need to see you at the next study session. It might be good just to come in for the next study session, just to give us one more walkthrough and.
Absolutely.
All right, Michael, the floor is yours.
Thank you, again, Michael with Diamond Peak, and like Mr. Kennedy stated earlier this evening, these study sessions are to provide information on an ongoing basis. As you all know, I've been here since April, I believe, we've made multiple revisions to the plan, we're at the point of a minimum of 80-foot wide lots in this development. I know a few questions, we're actually seeing the lot dimensions on the layout, so on the 11-by-17 sheet, you can see the, the lot dimensions, width and depth on those lots, along with last week, or, excuse me, not last week, but the public hearing earlier this month, we, you guys asked to see some of our standard features as well. So I do have a, a standard features list, which is pretty common in all of our developments, of course, in Astoria, our plan is to provide an all LP exterior, with the exception of, you know, the stone facade on the front of the building, and it does kind of spell out what we use framing-wise, some interior finishes, you know, things of that nature, of course, the shower stall, it does go into, not deep detail, but enough that a homeowner or the board in front of me would understand what they're getting when they build with us.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I asked for that information, because this will be, this will be part of the PUD agreement for the rezone, this would require the developer to meet these standards in their facilities. So is there any questions for Michael, comments? Michael, I have two, I don't know why I didn't notice this before, in lots, there's nothing to the north, is there, there's nothing to the north of you, above lots 12 through 19, or there existing lots?
Yes, there are existing lots there.
You know, now that I look, and I apologize, I'm catching this late, because you've been here multiple times, it would be nice to see those lot lines line up. If you see lots 12, 13, 14, 15, some of them split, where you have two backyards, I don't know what you guys can do to sque, I can't say squeeze.
John?
Not squeeze.
The reason those lots are almost square is because they didn't have enough depth, and in order to get the square footage for those lots to the north, they made them wider.
Oh.
Not standard-sized lots.
Like 110 or 115 wide, I believe.
Thank you, thank you. So not only are they wider, these are narrower on the south, yes, okay.
Yeah, because they have the depth.
Gotcha.
Right.
Gotcha, all right, thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
And then, you know, we have a, we, John, correct me, we have a rule in our ordinance, you know, not the same-looking house, you have stand.
Anti-manatee clauses.
Yeah, so how are you going to, you have certain units and, and homes that are going to put on, how are we making sure you don't have four of the same homes on lots 12, 13, 14, and that all look?
Right, and that would be part of the PUD guidelines where we would oversee that, of course, our sales staff knows that, don't sell similar house right next door to each other, so we, we can spell that out in the PUD guidelines as well.
I mean, if it's not in the PUD, then they can put four homes together, right, or?
Yeah, I mean, well, they could do the same house, but if they have different exterior elevations, then, like, if one has a covered front porch and one doesn't, or one has a three-car garage, versus, there's, I think you have to have three differences.
And that may, okay.
And then, yeah, so if you do like a hip roof instead of a gable roof, a front porch and a three-car garage, those are three changes, so you could do, in theory, the same floor plan, as long as it looks different from the, the street view.
Michael, if we could just make sure that's put in there.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
How many different styles do you guys have for the people to choose from?
Uh, right now, roughly 10 to 12, but as we continue to grow, we continue to add to that as well.
We have the map, can we see where this is exactly?
Like a?
The GIS, maybe?
That is not something I brought, so I apologize.
You can bring it up on the.
Between 231 and Joliet off of Parish.
I just can't picture where off Parish is.
Yeah, it's what, north of the gates, south of the Christian church subdivision that they just put in, in between there.
Between Suncrest and 103rd, going into the gates.
Oh, so I wrote, this is North Gate, right, up here to the north?
It's the back end of it. It's unit 20 that turns into North Gate, correct, yeah.
I got it, I know where it is now, we're good.
Good.
So you know I'm still concerned about lot width, what is, what is the width of your homes?
Uh, start at, our most narrow is 37 feet wide, so at a third-car garage, that's 47 feet wide, and of course, our widest home is, I think without a third-car garage, would be 47 to 48 feet wide. So all in all, with a third-car garage, you're looking at a 60-foot wide max building.
60-foot wide?
Mm-hmm.
So give you 10 and 10 for side yards.
But the PUD is, is eight and eight, right?
Yeah.
Eight and eight? So I got a question for you, if your largest house allows for 10 and 10, why aren't we asking for 10 and 10 side yards? If your largest with home?
Right.
Is 60, why are we recommending 8-foot side yards when you can do 10?
Could potentially do 10, that's a good point, I mean, we can, we can look into that, I think we were just meeting up with the current R2 guidelines with that.
John, does the setback include the heaves?
Uh, there's language in there that it does, but when we review the site plans, the heaves aren't on there, so we've always historically just went off the foundation. That was supposed to be revised in the zoning ordinance, but it never occurred yet.
I knew that was a point of conversation, I never knew it.
Yeah, it comes up every once in a while, I mean.
I mean, if that's R2, then I'm fine, I'm just, I don't know, we don't want people passing the shirt between windows, so, so.
Well, maybe it gives them a little wiggle room, too.
It gives them, okay, no, no, I, I just.
And then, you know, NIPSCO might put it right on, right on easement line, too.
So then I'll be more than happy to come back in a month of the study session, as we continue to firm up our PUD guidelines and covenants, of course, because we'll have to, you know, submit all that as well, so I, I'll be here in a month, and then, like I said, we won't be here at the public hearing on August 4th, but we will be September 1st, I believe, is when the next one is, in September, so.
Okay. And again, board, this will be a recommendation, a recommendation of the town council for their determination on this zoning, so, all right, Michael, get us that information, and then also let's just make sure we got that front end, you know, the 25% and the brick wrap and all that kind of good stuff taken care of.
Absolutely, thank you.
We'll see you in a month, you'll probably come to the study session, okay, very good. Thank you, sir. All right, Castle Rock, phase three, we have a subdivision for 47 single-family lots, approximately 86th Place and Manor House Drive.
Our owner in a forest. Cost me 68.
Thank you, sir.
Fifty-eight bucks the other day, David, I missed the ink in my home printer.
Good evening, Doug Reddick with DVG, Andy James from Ham's Lake Development is here as well. Andy is the owner developer of Castle Rock, as many of you know, Castle Rock Phase One and Phase Two were built a few years ago now, something like that, and this is a undeveloped portion to the north that Andy wants to get started on. It has challenges, as a lot of parcels in town do, this one is, got four, four pipelines running through it, so it's the big red lines that are the pipeline easement and the pipeline impact zone. So we're trying to, you know, allow for the easement, as well as the 50-foot on each side of the easement, which is your impact zone, so that, that's what kind of is the driving force of this whole concept plan.
Doug, where's this at in relationship to the first and second phase?
To the west, to the west and a little bit to the north.
North, okay.
So actually, if you go, yeah, you go look at either one, there's a street stub coming out of Phase One, which we're going to be picking up.
Where's that at?
It's just. Right there, right, actually, right there.
Okay.
So that's, that's our connection, we also connect to the northeast, to 89th, I think it is, so really, we have one access point to this portion of the subdivision, because it's surrounded by undeveloped land and, and wetlands, and there's a large wetland on the property as well. But if you look at the sketch, way up at the northwest corner, we're showing a street stub to the west, so what that is, is a project in Dyer that DVG is also doing the work on, and the two owners have communicated with each other, and that will go not quite straight through, but to Sheffield Avenue. So there's a new project being planned in Dyer, engineering will be underway very soon for that one as well, so that is a connection to Sheffield Avenue. That's about a 40 or 50-lot subdivision going into the west, it's in the town of Dyer, so that's the town line. Actually, you have town of Dyer, town of St. John, and unincorporated Lake County all come together at our northwest corner, so Dyer only has like a 330-foot wide strip, which is what you're seeing there, and then unincorporated to the south, unincorporated to the north, St. John to the east, so it's a little confusing, but we've been in communication with the town of Dyer, and the sketch plan that we presented for that project lines up with this one, and we feel that's kind of an important matter for connectivity and so we don't have a long dead-end cul-de-sac, which I don't think would sit too well with anybody. So we have, the first sheet is overall with the aerial photograph, you can see what's going on in the surrounding area, and then the second page is a little bit more detailed with lot dimensions and lot sizes, but keep in mind, this property is zone R2, all these lots exceed your R2 ordinance, which is 100 by 150, or 15,000 square feet, these lots, you know, that's only, that's not even half an acre, but most of these lots are a half acre, some of them are even larger, two acres, so we're looking for larger homes, 100-foot wide lots, estate-type homes, very private, nothing in your backyard, wetlands, deeper lots, we had some of that in the first phase of Castle Rock on the west side, similar to that. Challenges here are pipeline, the crossings and the permitting involved with getting over the pipelines, sewer issues, we're going to talk to Ken about best way to handle sanitary sewer, and we can't really do much with water main, because we can't really connect to Dyer, so we will have to do probably maybe a flushing hydrant at the north end for that purpose, and we have to get the wetlands looked at, and we got to have a new delineation done for the wetlands, that'll be coming up pretty quick, and that will, you know, create some conservation easements for any, any wetlands, we know we have wetlands on site, but we have to have them freshly delineated. So that's a lot to take in, but we're looking at, I think it's about 47 lots, we may gain or lose a couple, depending on what happens with the wetlands, but we wanted to present the concept, and the road is following this kind of curved linear path, but there's kind of a high ridge that, it's almost dictated for us, we're following the high ground, and there's wetlands almost on either side.
I'd be curious, what are the pipelines, what are they, what are, what's in them?
Petroleum, either gas or, natural gas or petroleum, I don't know which is in which one, but there's three different companies, four different pipelines.
The blue dotted line shows the wetland area?
The wetlands are not shown.
It's the blue dotted line?
Which one were you looking at?
The top page, the big top page with the?
Actually, that is, like, yeah, kind of the, roughly the edge of the wetland, the large wetland on the property.
So 33, unit 33, that would be like the, you know, the wetlands would go up right up to the house?
Well, that's actually not the true delineation line, it's just an estimate, estimation of it, so once we get the wetland delineated, we'll have to revisit that, but it's possible we'll have an issue there.
How about pipeline impact distances?
The red lines are your 50-foot impact zone.
Okay.
So we, we designed around it, pushed some houses back, so we've, we've accommodated the easement, as well as a 50-foot.
Okay.
Landscape buffer, landscape buffer impact zone. Love it, hate it?
I under, question, why not go to Calumet? Why not tie into Calumet?
Good question, so here's.
Where's Calumet?
It's, it's right there.
It would be best if we put it up on the GIS, Sergio, it shows on the, on this, on the page, but, so Calumet Avenue to the north, I want to, let's use the GIS, it'll be, it'll make more sense. So the subdivision to the west, which is called Whispering Woods, I believe, they dedicated half a right-of-way, but they didn't build the road. And to the north, Calumet Avenue is not dedicated, there's homes that they own out to the middle of the road, but they never dedicated the right-of-way, so we physically couldn't make the connection to the north.
So there's no way to get to it.
We did a, many years ago, I did a one or two-lot subdivision there, we dedicated part of the right-of-way, but everybody else doesn't want to, they don't want the road to go through at the time, you know, it'll make a little bit more sense when you see it here.
Doug, didn't we run into this problem with the Killkenny?
Columbia.
I know, we talked about it, yeah.
Well, and then, yeah, we did not connect to Columbia, because the residents there didn't want us to, and we, we're going to get the same kind of resistance.
Will the residents here want to connect to Dyer and going out to Sheffield?
So just everyone where, I live in this neighborhood, and right now, there are two ways, well, let me rephrase that, there's three ways to get out, you can go east to 81st, or you go south to either Columbia, what's the other one, Calumet, and now you're adding 47 more homes, and all you're doing is you're pushing people either south or east towards 81st, so there's a lot of, you know, so there, in Killkenny, it was proposed to connect to Columbia, and it was, they did not, the plan commission at the time did not make Phase Two, I think it was, connect, because of the, you know, the concerns of all the traffic going up Columbia onto 100, or 81st.
That's Columbia, that's the connection, it physically did not physically connect.
There's, it's 10 feet, there's road stubs on each side, and there's 10 feet, it's even, it's even probably less than 10 feet, it's probably like five feet to separate the two roads.
Unincorporated Lake County versus St. John.
We could go out and dig a, dig a little trench.
And, and so, I mean, there's benefits, let's, let's be honest, it's a very secluded place to get back into, in St. John, but we're forcing people onto this, we're forcing everyone down to 93rd, which is all congested, and if, I don't know if anyone's seen Sheffield, it, it, you know, there's a lot of traffic on Sheffield, because everyone has to go south to 93rd, over to Sheffield, and then north, back up to 81st. No one wants additional traffic in their neighborhood, but we need to start deflecting traffic, we need to start spreading it, and I think it's important that some connectivity be made at this phase, some, it's got to be made.
Especially if you get there when there's no traffic, then it's great. And this is where we're going to be picking up the street, the stub to here, so we're going to pave up through here, this is big wetland.
At 3:30?
Existing Whispering Woods, so they put a cul-de-sac in, but they dedicated a 60-foot right-of-way to get to here, and they dedicated a 30-foot right-of-way to get to here, that's that, the center line shouldn't be drawn in there, this right-of-way does not exist, it's like it was planned for, but you can see Calumet Avenue here, it stops here, and only this subdivision here dedicated to the middle of the road, everybody else owns to the center line of the road, so you'd have Everybody else owns to the center line of the road, so you'd have to get everybody to cooperate. And we know from when I did this project, they don't wanna cooperate.
Nope.
So, Andy would be glad to dedicate his half, and this gentleman would be glad to dedicate his half, but it's never gonna happen. So, we're, that's why we're proposing taking the road out through here, over to Sheffield, through this other project.
Is that why?
And that's another development?
It's another development in the town of Dyer. This is, this green line here is, this piece was annexed to the Dyer, and will be coming out right here on Sheffield with the road and a curb, and then up to there. So, that's, that's almost the same stage as this project, but it's on a different topic. And if you wanna see a sketch plan, I didn't have it with me.
Please.
Doug, where's the stop sign, uh, just north of 93rd?
It's not for sale.
Sale again, please?
Oh, yeah.
On Sheffield? In relationship to the green?
He wants the stop sign north of 93rd on Sheffield to where this, where this road will come out on Sheffield.
No, this should come up by the church.
Yeah.
Oh, farther up?
It's where the church?
Well, that might help.
Oh, yeah.
Having that connection would probably help relieve the stop sign being backed up just north of 93rd. Cause then people can come through the Dyer development and...
It should've heard...
It's...
The church, Dyer aren't gonna be going that way to get a church at the St. John.
Well, no, but residents living in St. John might cut through the Dyer subdivision to get over, so they don't have to wait, wait at the stop sign, um, just north of 93rd, that intersection, and then they'd cut through.
I'm one less person that will drive on 93rd and Sheffield to block up those stop signs, 'cause I'll be taking this road.
Yeah, you cut through.
To cut through.
Yeah.
And, and all you're doing is deflecting traffic, or diverse, you know, just spreading out traffic. That's all you're doing.
So, yeah, we're closer to 81st Avenue. We're close to the church. Uh, High Point Prairie's got a couple entrances on the Sheffield, and we're kind of in between those two entrances. So, that's, that's the big picture. Um, that's why we are presenting what we're presenting.
So, the church is just south of what? Is that 85th?
81st.
81st, okay.
Is that why next to Lot 22, you have that little, because it's dedicated to Calumet on the top left?
Yeah, we're gonna dedicate it, but it'll not happen, but we'll, we'll give them the right-of-way to do so. If that's what's desired.
And, and you're saying the project in Dyer is happening concurrently, same timeframe, I understand, there's always issues.
More or less.
But, I guess, from my perspective, how do we have a comfort level that that connectivity's gonna happen? Because we could sit here and say, okay, we got a stub, but we have no... Because if that stub doesn't go through, this is gonna be 47 more tra, you know, I'll say 94 more cars having to be forced down to 93rd over to Sheffield.
It's a concern, John. It is. But, that project, we just got it, um, rezoned favorably by the town. We are getting a drain tile study done. We'll have that in our hand any day. We're having the wetlands looked at. So, we're gonna start engineering that project probably within the next 60 days, maybe less. So, it'll be before their Plan Commission, before this one is, because we got work to do here with wetlands and everything. So, it's gonna be a, a month or two ahead, maybe of this project. So, you'll be able to see what's happening, and I can give you, give you updates on that. I can bring the sketch plan in too.
Is it all gonna be done in one phase or multiple phases?
Uh, it's probably a two-phase project, and that, and that extension will not be the first phase, because it's, it's a tail end.
Right.
So...
Is the town of Dyer aware of, is the town of Dyer Plan Commission aware of this connectivity?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I told them this, and they, they, they think it's the right thing to do too.
Okay. I mean, preferably, I would love to see Calumet, and I'd still like to see Columbia connected, um, but I understand people's concern. But, if, I agree with Doug, this might be the only option we can get on the northwest corner.
So, what's the possibility connecting to Columbia? Is that...
Five feet?
Yeah, well, what about, is it property line owned to the center line?
On Columbia?
On Columbia.
I think it's similar there too. I think you're right. That's the same thing. Those, those are acreage parcels, but they're not lots. So, the right-of-way was never planted.
Never planted.
And I think that was one of the deciding factors there too. Plus, it's in the county, and the county, the residents spoke out, and they didn't want it.
All right, any questions, comments for Doug? Uh, Doug, I'm assuming since, I'm sorry, Yolanda or Nancy?
I just wanna just throw it out there that I agree with everything you're saying, because it's just gonna throw that many more cars going down the back way if, if you have 85th closed. You know, it's a nightmare when you're trying to get out of this subdivision if there's a road closure. So, I, you know, I agree with everything that you said.
Okay. Doug, just one more question. 17, 18, 19, that's a unique setup for those lots. I don't know if I've ever seen that.
17, 18, 19. Again, there's wetlands back there. The, uh, 20 and 17 and 19, they're big lots, so we're just extending the lot lines back.
And we'll see some dimensions. I know Bob, and Bob, I'm not speaking for you. He always liked to see dimensions on the lot.
They're on the second page of your...
Oh, sorry.
Admittedly, they're small. I mean, I, again, I got, I got old eyes, so I print the big ones for myself, but they get unwieldy up there. But, uh, they're all, you know, again, 100-foot minimum width and, you know, 100-foot, 50-foot, uh, minimum depth.
So, they meet all our standards, okay?
Yeah, this is a straight R2.
Is it really?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the shape of his lot. That's 17. So, I was just like, I've never, I don't know.
And you love it, right?
I'm gonna buy it, buy that lot.
Yeah, Doug, I mean, as, my comfort level with this is gonna be greatly enhanced as I see Dyer's project moving forward, because we need that connectivity. I was pushing for Columbia, and it didn't happen, but this, this is a necessity. This is a necessity to this neigh, for this neighborhood.
Both projects need it.
Yes.
They really do. I, I think the towns need to work together here, because they both, they both need it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in these large lots, they will have conservation easements in the back, which is what we did in Unit 1, 2 for the wetlands. So, we just don't have those delineated yet. So, they're big lots, but they're gonna have a lot of conservation area on them.
Well, you could look at it too. If it, this was never proposed, we'd never have a chance to make connectivity.
No, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Yeah, this is our best chance, but at the same time, I'm, if something happens to Dyer, then... So, we're in the same boat as Calumet, so...
So...
The Dyer development needs us as much as we need them, because for Dyer, it's like, here's our second way out. I don't want to, why is this a dead end?
Oh, they'd be one way in, one way out if this doesn't connect.
They have two entrances.
They need, they need, they need this.
So, this will travel through the subdivision, and if the Dyer people are wanting to get through to 93rd?
It, it will, but...
It wouldn't make sense for the Dyer people to go to 93rd Avenue this way, when they can go down Sheffield.
I mean, if they're trying to get to 80, I mean, they can take this way to get to, what is that, 85th down to St. John? If they were going to Walgreens, they're coming this, well, maybe it all depends on what time.
Well, if it's 5 o'clock, they might come through this way.
But, yeah.
But, you got...
This is the right turn in the morning too, for all these people. This is the right turn out.
Yeah.
True, under Sheffield.
Which is, that's big.
And you got Kilkenny Estates all in here, and I can't remember what the other subdivision is to the east, that if any of them are going to, if any of them are going Illinois, they're going this way.
Yeah.
Or if they wanna get to Dyer, if they wanna get to US 30. But, it just takes away from 93rd and Sheffield and 91st at Sheffield, which is just at 4:00 in the afternoon. You're talking 40 or 50 cars deep, so...
You would be Kilkenny Estates as well. You'd find yourself taking that way more often than not.
I...
You're gonna save a lot of time. You're gonna save three or four minutes.
I'm Lot 121 on this plan, so yes, I will be taking this roadway.
So, you're looking forward to it?
I'm looking forward to it, yes. Though I don't work in Illinois. I work in Northwest Indiana, but I will be looking forward to this.
Make it, make it happen. I really do. There's a ditch crossing in there too, uh, right on our property, so that...
Yeah, we're, cause that was a, I'm sorry, Doug, I didn't mean, or, cause that was one of the concerns, I'm not potentially going to Calumet, because there is a, is a...
Dyer ditch.
Dyer ditch.
Is it a ditch?
Yeah, it's the start of the Dyer ditch.
It's the very beginning of Dyer ditch. I cannot, yeah.
So, it's not a cost factor, we're not going to Calumet. It's just...
Oh, no.
It's just act, it's the ability to access.
It's probably gonna be more costly to do this.
This, yeah, this is gonna cost more money to go across that.
Cause we gotta cross the ditch. The ditch crossings are gonna be pretty crazy.
So, Doug, you rep, you're representing the owner in Dyer, right?
We're doing the engineering.
Is it the same owner of St. John?
We have a signed proposal to do the engineering.
Okay. So, I'll just, I'll just keep on hitting you up on the...
And I'll bring you a sketch.
Okay.
It looks very nice.
Okay. Can I tell you what type of homes? R1, R2?
It's a, it's a R2 project, all single-family, higher-end.
Okay.
Um, yeah. And it's a local builder that you would, you probably know the name, so...
Okay, very good.
Starts with ARM.
Very good. Awesome.
All right.
All right. Uh, I'm sorry, any other questions, comments? Nancy, how do you like it? Cause Nancy doesn't live too far from me, so, sorry, Nancy, I just...
That's why I said I agree with you.
Yes.
I like it too.
Awesome.
And I don't work in Illinois or Indiana.
She's retired.
I wanna be like Nancy.
All right, any other questions before we get, let Doug go? Okay, so then, this, we'll do a public hearing, what, in September?
No, we're not ready for that.
You're not ready for that?
We got, we got work to do. We got, uh, wetlands, pipelines, uh...
Take your time, let Dyer keep moving.
We got Dyer to work, yeah.
Let Dyer move, and then you guys, okay, very good.
We'll be back, but just not, not next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we got Gates of St. John, Unit 22, final plat review. One well lot approximately 700 feet north from northeast corner of 105th Avenue and Pivot Drive. Is there anyone here from the petitioner?
I guess it's me. Um, we've, the town has been asking for this outlot to put well number eight in. Without, uh, ownership of the property or easement to put the well in, we can't even make an item, uh, application for well number eight. And as you know, the town is in need of another well, probably two more wells. So, this, uh, uh, has been a couple of years in, in the making here. Though they have it listed as Unit 22, it really falls in the Unit 21, uh, area. The dash lines you see around the, the well outlot, that's all Unit 22, so I, I guess you could call it there. But, you see the lot numbers are 2108 and 2109, so I think to avoid confusion in, in later times, that maybe we should change this to Unit 21C, 'cause there's already a 21B. You can see on, on this plan, there is a 100-foot radius isolation cer, uh, easement. That's so that no other utilities can go in there, even though the whole lot, uh, is an easement for drainage and landscaping and... I guess it's just drainage detention and landscape easement for that whole lot. But, inside of that circle, we can't have any pipes. So, uh, in between lots 2108 and 2109, you'll see there's a strip that's part of the outlot. That'll be for the access driveway to get to the well. And then, the, um, the dash lines you see, the square in the middle of the outlot, and, and going west, there's a 15-foot easement that then turns and goes south. That is the existing 15-foot-wide raw water line easement. So, once we get this approved and recorded, the town can make application to item for well number eight, and then, uh, we can, uh, formalize that, that, um, well, and, and we'll have to design the wellhouse and whatever treatment needs to go with it.
So, I'm sorry, Ken, were you done? I apologize.
I think so.
Okay, any questions for Ken? Can I, so, were you on the board when this was, when this came through?
No, I don't think so. I don't remember it.
So, I, so when this was going through, so this is just a plat, the well, correct? Not the two lots?
Yes, the two lots come with it.
Okay, so, it says final plat review. Should it be primary plat review?
No, this was all approved. Primary plat was approved with Gates, Unit 21 through 26.
But, I thought they took this out. They took this well and these two lots out.
They did. As part of the, um, Gates, Unit 21, 23, and 26 approval, they took those two lots out and this outlot for the well. Now, they're plugging it back in.
But, then, shouldn't it be primary first?
It already, it already received primary with, uh, lots 21 through 26. It was not taken out of the primary plat. It was only taken out of the secondary plat for units 21, 23, and 26. They came in, what, about a year ago?
Yeah, because I remember it was in one time, and then they took it out.
Right.
And so...
Right.
Okay, so, A was, so you're saying A, B, and C, you know, there's so many different renditions of this.
Unit 21 are these rows of lots, uh, on the west side. Lot 21B is a row of lots that run east and west to the south of here. So, we have a Unit 21 and a Unit 21B right now. We do not have a Unit 22 in final plat, but we do have 22 in, uh, primary, of which this is not part of.
So, the well was initially in the primary, because it...
Yes.
Cause I remember this, and I remember then they took it out, 'cause they were negotiating lot sizes, and a number of lots and things like that.
Right, yes.
I just wanna make sure this board is dotting their i's and crossing their t's, and we have everything. Cause I assume, I didn't think this made primary, and that's why I just wanna make sure...
It did make primary.
It did make primary before we go to secondary.
Yep.
Okay. And we have all that documented?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I actually asked Sergio to send me copies of, uh, the Lot 21, 23, and 26, uh, plats that were approved and are recorded. And we do have a primary plat for, uh, revised lots for Unit 22, which is the area around the well site.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're doing everything in the right procedure and order. Okay. Very good. So, this is a, so this is ministerial, as long as you're gonna review it and make, make sure it meets primary?
Yeah, and there's no public improvements with this, because the, the, uh, sewer and water and drainage and all that stuff were all part of the Unit 21 stuff, you know, 'cause these were going to be in Unit 21, but he pulled them out. So, they're, they're all covered as far as public improvements, uh, being done. And, uh, so whatever we, as the town, designed for this well, that'll be all up to us at that time.
Okay. Well, I, I know everything's been settled, uh, suit, but I just, let's just make Sergio, he wasn't here in 2019, and when this was all going back and forth, so let's just make sure we have all the documented, everything buttoned up before we, we go take this...
And that's one of the reasons I made the request from Sergio for those, uh, couple of plats.
So, then it would be for Lot 2108, the well itself, and 2109 would get secondary?
Yes.
And that's just so we can get the access road in, the well built, and then those two lots will then be included, 'cause they were taken out from primary to secondary?
Correct.
Okay. Everyone, everyone? Sergio, we'll just make sure we got everything buttoned up?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Ken? And Ken, thanks for your institutional knowledge on this, because I was like, hey, that was taken out. That needs to be primary.
Well, I was, having the name Unit 22 on it was kinda confusing for me, 'cause I was looking in the 22 area, and I said, wait a minute, this is 21. I've sent an email off to, uh, the owner and to the, um, surveyor who's preparing the plat, and asked them to change the name, but I haven't heard back from them yet.
Okay. So, would this be on February 4th?
February.
I'm sorry.
Woo!
August, August 4th? August 4th? Yeah, August 4th. Let's, the only, uh, board members, this might, just as long as we have all the documented, all the documented, Sergio and Ken have reviewed them, making sure we got the right information, primary and secondary, you know, then I would feel comfortable entertaining a motion.
Sergio and myself will, will be in contact with Mr. Lawton and, uh, um, Tony Strickland, who's the surveyor that's preparing the plat.
Yeah, not that Sergio has enough on his plate. We'll, we'll just make sure you guys are okay with moving forward on this. So, okay, very good. Any questions for Ken regarding this final plat review for the well lot and the two lots? And you said there's a raw water on that as well, so...
Yeah, I believe some of that piping is already in place, 'cause the, that raw water easement has been, uh, in place for almost a year, maybe even longer.
Okay. Next on the, I'm sorry, we're gonna jump if no one has anything else. Uh, next on the agenda is amendment to Plan Commission rules and regulations. I'm gonna turn it over to Adam. Uh, but Adam, can you clarify, because I think there was some confusion at the end... Okay. Next on the, I'm sorry, we're going to jump if no one has anything else. Next on the agenda is amendment to Plan Commission rules and regulations. I'm going to turn it over to Adam, but Adam, can you clarify, because I think there was some confusion at the end of last meeting regarding the state, what the state statute was. Yolanda, you made a comment, and I think we concurred with you, and I think, I know we were wrong. So I'm going to have Adam explain it, and then please clarify what the state statute requirements are for public notification.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, may I ask, did everyone receive my email that I sent out yesterday? I, I attempted to summarize in the email where things were left and where things are at, and so at the risk of being redundant, I can review that with the Plan Commission tonight. So let me begin with, let's go back to 2017. At that time, the Plan Commission rules and regulations required that a notice for public hearing be published in two newspapers at least 15 days prior to the date of the hearing. There are also notice requirements that are contained in the rules and regulations about posting of the notice and certified mail to certain landowners. So, earlier this year, the Plan Commission adopted a resolution to amend the rules and regulations to reduce the time for publication of notices from 15 to 10 days, and to reduce to one. This was done at the suggestion of Rick Everly and Paul Panzik, in order to make the rules consistent with Indiana state law. State law only requires that notice be given and published once at least 10 days in advance of the hearing. The specific Indiana code is found at 36-7-4-706, and it provides that after staff has announced a date for a hearing before the Plan Commission, it shall notify the applicant in writing, give notice of the hearing by publication in accordance with Indiana Code 531, and provide for due notice to interested parties at least 10 days before the date of the set for the hearing. For reference, Indiana Code 531 provides that notice of a hearing be published one time at least 10 days before the date of the hearing. So that is the, that hopefully addresses your question about the state of the law, or what the law is currently, and where things are at with the Plan Commission. The purpose of the proposed amendment to the rules and regulations is to make those rules and regulations consistent with what the current status is with regard to the zoning ordinance for hearings before the Board of Zoning Appeals, which currently requires that hearing notice be published one time in two newspapers at least 10 days before the date of the hearing.
Very good. So, so it has come back to us after the town council. We made a recommendation of the town council to.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, it is not coming back to the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission's not required to take any action. By state law, and I can get into the details of, of this, about what happened with regard to the BZA and the change to the zoning ordinance, which really doesn't apply for purposes of the rules and regulations of the Plan Commission. But, but briefly, the Plan Commission had made a recommendation to make changes to the zoning ordinance, okay? Again, this is unrelated to what's the agenda item for tonight's meeting. Again, that, that exercise was done in order to update the rules and regulations, as well as the zoning, zoning ordinance, to make it consistent with state law. And the town council, after the Plan Commission had made a recommendation to change the hearing notice requirements in the zoning ordinance, consistent with state law, which is publication one time in one newspaper 10 days in advance of the hearing, at its meeting in March of 2021, did not approve that proposal, and essentially, there was discussion about requiring that it be published in two newspapers. Under state law, that change in the proposal should have come back to the Plan Commission, and it would have been allowed to consider it and act on it within 90 days. It did not. The Plan Commission did not consider that within that 90-day period. So as a result, that essentially, those changes to the proposal made by the council became effective, became the law of the town with regard to those hearing notice requirements. So, so there's nothing presented, and there's nothing coming back to the Plan Commission at this point from the town council. It's simply, I would present it as, does the Plan Commission want its rules and regulations to be consistent with what the zoning ordinance currently provides with regard to those notice requirements for a public hearing?
I thought the council wanted, or voted on, one time, two newspapers.
Yeah, they did, that's the current state.
Yeah.
Publication one time in two newspapers 10 days in advance of the hearing.
So currently, Adam, and correct me if I'm wrong.
But that's not state?
No.
We're more stringent than what the state says you need to be.
So why are we changing, if the council wants to have it one, one notice, two newspapers, why are we, why is it coming back to us?
Because the Plan Commission currently now is one newspaper, one time, Plan Commission.
Yeah.
We were also changing it to make the BZA one newspaper, one time, but when the council did not approve our recommendation, BZA is now two newspapers. So now we have a BZA.
One time, one notice, newspaper.
And two newspapers, and the Plan Commission is one newspaper, one time. So I think the goal in the town now is to try to either make BZA and the Plan.
Have them both symmetrical, where it's the same notice.
So we would go back to.
I, I think that's where the confusion was last time, and my apologies if I made the issue even more confusing, but I think we're all in agreement that we want the BZA to be consistent with the town council and the Plan Commission. That way, there's no, just inconsistencies or confusion in terms of what needs to be done. I think that's what the point was, but, but I see that it is different from Indiana state law, so my apologies for that.
No, we agreed with you, and then all of a sudden after the meeting, we're like, we gave you wrong information, so we just want to make that clear, so. So in, in front of us is amendment to the Plan Commission rules now, to go back to, the BZA would, you know, stay at two newspapers, one time. It would now change the Plan Commission rules to, back to two newspapers, one time.
Okay.
So that's what's in front of us currently. And that will be open for a resolution on August 4th.
Yes, that's correct. It would simply, so the Plan Commission, unlike the Board of Zoning Appeals, can simply make its own rules and regulations by adopting a resolution concerning notice requirements and what those requirements are, so. If the, yes, so simply the, the commission would consider a resolution to change those rules and regulations, and that would be the end of it. It would need, would not need to go to the town council at that point in time.
Very good. All right. Thank you, Adam, for going through that for me and the board. All right, any questions for Adam regarding the resolution that will be presented before the Plan Commission? Next on the agenda, we have Continental, Unit 1 and 2, discussion of a notice of designation of zoning. And this is to allow a construction of two, of one home on two lots. I think it's, there's four homes that are asking to consolidate two lots. Is it four? Is that the number, or is it just one? Can't remember. But, go ahead, Adam.
Yeah, I believe it's more than just two lots. It may be more, it may be four lots combined into two, or it's not really a combination, but. The, a representative of Continental had contacted me and indicated that, that lots had been sold to persons who bought adjacent lots for the purpose of building a house on both lots. And that, that representative indicated that under their covenants for the subdivision, that they collect homeowners association dues, and, and that relates to, you know, probably maintenance of the subdivision from each lot. And that, in the past, in St. John, there had been approved by the town, a, a document essentially referred to as a, I'm looking at the note here, a designation of zoning lot, and I think that's included in the packet that was provided, yes, notice of designation of a zoning lot. And this is an example of one that was done more recently in 2020. The representative indicated to me that this had been done in a residential parcel in Edgewood Estates, Unit 4, and provided me the, the parcel numbers for the lots 143 and 144. And so the representative indicated that they wanted to follow that same procedure to allow for, essentially, the recording, and this document would be recorded, so as you can see, this notice of designation of zoning lot was recorded, that's the stamp that's indicated on the side. And that, as a recorded document, that puts the world on notice that these two lots are considered a unit under the town's zoning ordinance. And so, in our, in our zoning ordinance, there is a definition for a zoning lot, which is a tract of land located within a block, which at the time of filing for a zoning permit, or if no zoning permit is required at the time of filing for a certificate of occupancy, is designated by its owner or developer as a tract, all of which is to be used, developed, or built upon as a unit. Our zoning ordinance is a bit outdated, because there is no zoning permit that's not utilized, that's not required by the town, nor is the term unit defined in the zoning ordinance. But notwithstanding that, the zoning ordinance defines a lot as a piece, parcel, or plot of land intended as a unit for transfer of ownership of at least sufficient size to meet minimum zoning requirements. Such lot shall have frontage on an approved public street or an approved private street. The representative of the subdivision indicated that these lots all comply with the subdivision control ordinance in terms of their minimum size, I believe it's an R1 subdivision. So, the reason it's before the Plan Commission is because essentially, I, we've submitted it for discussion as to whether the Plan Commission will consider the recording of the document, the notice of designation of zoning unit, for purposes of allowing a building permit to be issued for the construction of a house on the two lots. I know in the past, and again, my experience goes back to January 1 of last year, but in the past, the Plan Commission has considered replating subdivisions where there's been a combination of two lots into a single lot for this same purpose. My review of the zoning ordinance does not lead me to believe that that is required. I find no requirement in either the zoning ordinance or the subdivision control ordinance that requires that two lots be combined into a single lot pursuant to a replat for that purpose. So, the reason it's on the agenda is for discussion about that, and for some direction on, on how the Plan Commission wants to proceed.
Thank you, Adam. Before I open up for discussion, I'll ask Sergio, Ken, or John, put you guys on the hot seat, what is your opinion on something like this? I don't know what the pros and cons of not re-subdividing it and doing it as a notice of designation. I don't know what kind of effect that has.
Well, my, my thoughts are that this notice of designation, what it essentially does is create a zoning lot, but it does not create a zoning, or a lot of record. A lot of record identifies the lot lines themselves, they've been recorded and it recognized through municipality, through action, but I don't see how a designation of a zoning lot eliminates the lines of those records, and I pulled, if you can see here, the site, what was cited that was previously done, and that's lot 144 and 143. Those are two separate lots. And that blue line that you see in the middle is what was recorded, essentially combining these two for a zoning lot, but it is have, but it does have two lots of record. If you look at the home, it would meet the setback requirements based on that lot line. I don't know where the proposed home or homes for the Continental will be placed, if they're going to comply with the zoning setback requirements on a lot of record. I'll give you another example. In fact, when I was at the county today, speaking to them regarding on a different matter, this is interesting itself. It's how do we keep a record of this, see if I can get down to 101st and Klein. A woman is selling a piece of property with a home on there, and in 2013, the subdivision was created in 1961, but in 2013, they created a separate parcel, got it recorded with the county, never being recognized by the city, or by the town. And so we don't recognize that as a buildable lot, because it wasn't recorded or recognized by any board within the municipality. And so we're not able to issue a building permit, you know, she can sell it, but we won't be able to issue a building permit, because it does not comply with the setback requirements within the zoning code for a lot of record. And on a personal level, I own five 25-foot pieces of property, and I combined them into one zoning lot for tax purposes, but they're recorded as five separate lots, so. So I think whatever we do, we, we need to be cognizant of what the impacts could be from a, from a record standpoint and setting precedents moving forward.
Does this subdivision have a homeowners association, Adam? I think you mentioned that.
Yeah, that's why he wants.
Yes, my understanding, it does, yes.
So if we make it into one lot, then would they just be required to pay one fee, or?
Well, that's, that, that is actually what the representative indicated to me, that if, if the lots were combined into one lot, then that essentially would reduce the fees that, that owner would have to pay, which.
And I don't know if that would.
I think the representative was trying to address that, but.
Yeah, and I don't know if that would fly with the other lot owners, or, you know, or would they, you know, would that create issues?
Well, my, I mean, we've always been making homeowners replat.
And I think it's cleaner personally, from the, the permitting standpoint, it's much cleaner to.
Yeah, but did we, yeah, we replat it to two lot, you know, two lots in the one lot.
I mean, this is the same thing as that Columbia Court.
Are they in a homeowners association? No, when we do that, when we require that.
I mean, but we don't really, we've never really paid any regard to what it does from the HOA standpoint. We just did that with lots 1 and 2 and.
Preserve.
The preserves at Shelton Hills, and, you know, I, does that guy pay less dues? No, I don't know.
Okay.
So, I mean, I don't know why that's a town problem when they're trying to collect from individual lot owners.
Does a preserve have HO?
Yeah, I'm sure they do.
Reserve has an HOA.
So why do you say it's cleaner?
Well, then, then you have one, a sing, a, a one-lot subdivision, it has its own little plat, the house sits on there, and now, you know, would, you're gonna, if a house was going to straddle the theoretical property line between lots 7 and 8, let's say, in Continental, then technically, they're not meeting the 10-foot side yard setback or whatever, if they're, you know, but then when you create a one-lot subdivision, you delete that middle lot line, and then you, you meet the side yard setbacks and, and you get, you know, unless there's some stipulation that you attach to a zoning lot, where, you know, but, but in my mind, if you have, like Sergio just showed us in Edgewood there, the two lots, that, that one house sat on there, and then they, I think they just did that to get the accessory structures on the, the empty lot. Because our zoning ordinance also says that you need the primary structure first, so you can't just buy a lot in Castle Rock and put a shed on it, you would have to have the primary structure before you get the accessory structure. So I think that's why they did what they did.
And it could be ugly if there's an easement.
Right, if there's side yard easements, right, that's where.
Side yard easements.
Your one, your one-lot subdivision, you, you would replat all that and, and make everything work with your building pad that you want.
So that a utility, well, I'm still going to put the utility, I'm going to bore it under. underneath your house or.
Right, well, I mean.
I mean, they could get that crazy.
Yeah, we, I mean, we can't, we wouldn't issue a permit for a house on an easement. So then they're right back into the.
Probably not.
Problems again.
Okay. Now, I, I need to defer on this, you know, the recording, how it, I, I get a little, little concern if we're changing our process and procedures because someone has an issue with an HOA.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. I mean, if they're, if they're worried about somebody combining three lots and then them losing out on two lots worth of revenue, I don't know how that's a town or Plan Commission issue.
Yeah, I don't know either. I, I just brought it up.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, I mean, could they change, this is a PUD. Could they just change?
It is a PUD.
Yeah, okay, I was. Yeah, I wasn't certain of that.
Yeah, so it is a PUD. The other alternative is to amend the PUD to change language or include language that would help them, um, or at least clarify what can and can't be done on the location of some of these homes or structures within two lots or two or greater lots purchased. You know, I, I think we can amend some of that language, the PUD language, so you're not setting precedence moving forward with other developments because it is a PUD, so.
So, I mean, I, I, we're not making any decisions here, but if Adam has to go back to the representative, would it be appropriate to say the temperature of the board is, we like to stick with our current procedure and process?
I think so, yeah.
And not proceed with a, oh, notice of designation of zoning lot? And if there's something other type of mechanism that won't change our previous process and procedures, that's the direction this, I think the board will go. We're not making decisions, but just the temperature I'm getting, so.
No, I think those comments are informative and helpful and, and I, I will plan to share that with, with the representative.
Okay.
So just so that the commission and everyone here is aware, I have been in communication the last two days with someone who's interested in combining or getting it background information or plats on 34 and 33, lots 33 and 34 for home, um, asking what the process would be, you know, whether they, if they acquire both properties and decide to put one home on lot 34, they would meet the setback requirements. That doesn't prevent them from owning lot 33 as additional open space, but at the same time, you know.
But then they, they wouldn't be able to put a pool or anything on lot 33 because there's no primary structure for the accessory structure to be allowed.
Correct, unless, unless the ordinance of the PUD is amended to allow something of that nature with a reference to, you know, zoning lot versus lot of record.
Yeah, because we've made, historically, we've made people do that too, where I know there's a couple in Lake Hills and a couple in the Gates where, you know, they own lot 33 with their house on it, they buy lot 34 and their pool's on lot 34.
Yeah.
But they create their own one-lot subdivision, make it all one big tract of land, and then the pool is technically on your property.
On your property.
That, that has been my experience as well, because when you have a lot of record with an accessory use, you can turn around and sell that lot of record with a pool or an accessory structure. Um, at any point in time, uh, without tying that to the primary.
But then when you do the one-lot subdivision, that links it together permanently.
Okay. Like cleaner.
All right. Very good. Thank you, John, for your insight. That's helpful for at least me. Uh, just for the board's information, uh, unless the governor extends his executive order, uh, I believe the rules are, if he does not extend, we need to have a minimum four people at the board meeting. And if you are remote, again, this is if the governor does not extend his order, you have to be visible via camera. If he extends his order, we, we go about business as we have been. There are some other rules and regulations regarding the amount of time we have to participate or the meetings we have. So I don't know if there's a way we can get that to the board so they can understand what the council's rules and regulations are.
We could share the councils, the ordinance the council passed, but, uh, in, in summary, you could only be virtual for two meetings if you had, at one time consecutively. So if you, you know, say you have, uh, August, you could take the two meetings virtually, but like you said, you have to be on camera and you have to have your audio on. And then the third meeting would have to be physical unless you had a note from a doctor that you have a medical excuse, you're serving in the military, or, um, sorry, Jason, or had some sort of other, um, there were, there were four qualifications that would allow you to then be virtual again, um, but it's rather hard to meet. The, the gist is to try and get people in person.
Okay. So again, that's if the governor does not extend his emergency order. So it's great to have five and we'll see Nancy and Yolanda either via screen or in person and so, but again, uh, just FYI, so we'll have that, we'll know before August 4th. Any questions? That was Chris, by the way, if anybody was wondering. So if there's any questions, you can reach out to Sergio and Chris regarding process and procedures. With that, everyone, have a good evening.
John, have a good one, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Chris.
No problem.